I'm in at 17:00. Here's return Guam. It's back from recess. Welcome back, colleagues. We are on the second reading. And I'm going to recognize our Assistant Majority Leader.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Now, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to go to item 18. Consideration of Daily File to Vote on the Nomination in the Voting File.
There's a motion to go to consideration of the daily file to vote on the nominations only in the voting file. Is there any objection?
No.
Seeing no objection, we will go to the voting file. Sidoos Masi. So we are now on item 18, consideration of the daily file. So we will be voting now, colleagues, on the nomination of Romeo Romeo A. Angel to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. I'm sorry. Is there a motion to excuse members not present? Majority Leader, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to excuse members not present for this vote.
Is there an objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, motion carries. I'm going to call it again. On the nomination of Romeo Romeo A. Angel to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Romeo Romeo A. Angel received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Gregory J. Cruz to serve as a member, Respiratory Therapy Representative of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners. All in favor, please raise your hand. Gregory J. Cruz received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Lisa D. Flores, M.D., to serve as a member of the Criminal Injuries Compensation Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Lisa D. Flores, M.D., received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Jeffrey John P. Ibanez to serve as a member of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Jeffrey John P. Ibanez received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Abner V. Mariano, P.E. to serve as a member, Registered Professional Engineer Representative of the Guam Building Code Council. All in favor, please raise your hand. Abner V. Mariano, P.E. received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Kathleen D. Morelin to serve as a member of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency Board of Directors. All in favor, raise your, please raise your hand. Kathleen D. Morelin received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Gustavo A. Morales to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors. All in favor, please raise your hand. Gustavo A. Morales received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ronald F. Eclavea to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Ronald F. Eclavea received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Anita F. Orlino to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. All in favor, please raise your hand. Anita F. Orlino received majority support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the next vote, it's going to be roll call. On the nomination of Attorney Sean E. Brown to serve as a magistrate judge of the Superior Court of Guam. Roll call.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, aye. Senator Luhon. Senator Luhon, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson excused. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, aye. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, aye. Senator Sinicless. Senator Sinicless excused. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Titegui. Senator Titegui, aye. Speaker Tulahe.
Attorney Sean E. Brown received 13 ayes and two excused. Attorney Sean E. Brown is duly confirmed by this body. Majority Leader, you're recognized. We've exhausted our consideration of the daily file.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move at this time to vote on the resolutions that we've already completed in discussion and that have been moved to the voting file.
So, Madam Speaker.
Vice Speaker.
If, I thank you so much. If this is the time, I just notwithstanding, I guess, take Resolution 441 dash 37 and move it back to the third reading so that I could be able to add the sponsor, another sponsor, Senator Roy Canata and all others unless they don't want to be into the resolution as sponsors. So, do we do our most?
Majority, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. I withdraw my previous motion to give the clerk some time to address this next motion.
All right. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And with that being said, I appreciate it again just to take Resolution 441 dash 37 LS and include additional sponsors, which is Senator Roy Canata and all others, to this resolution.
There's a motion, notwithstanding the rules, to reconsider Resolution 441 and to add sponsors, Senator Canata and all others. On that motion, notwithstanding the rules, is there any objection?
No objection.
Senator Luhon? No objection. That motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Luhon, did you, is?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules as well, resolution, I'd like to add again, there were three senators that didn't have the opportunity to sign on Resolution 447, 37 COR, and they would like to be added, so. Do we have to bring it back to second reading?
Who are they?
Um, okay. It's myself, Senator Tina Barnes.
Now, who would you like to add?
Uh, let me see who. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. Okay. There's 12 here. There's three missing, so. Do that sound, okay. Okay, no, no, Roy's on here. Roy's here. Tom's here.
Would you like to add all senators as co-sponsors?
Yes, all senators, yes, please.
All right. There's a motion, notwithstanding the rules, on Resolution 447 to add all senators as co-sponsors. Is there any objection to that motion, notwithstanding the rules? Seeing no objection, that motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We've exhausted the third, the consideration pursuant to our motion, so we are now back to item 17, second reading file.
Speaker Theresa, on Bill 334 dash 37 LS, you recognize?
I'd like to move to accept Bill number 334 dash 37 LS as substituted on the floor. First of all, and this bill is an act to add a new section 75A 126 and 75 126 to Article 1, Chapter 75A and Chapter 75, Title 21 Guam Code annotated relative to removing legal clouds on the existing leases issued by the Chamor Land Trust Commission. That's a substituted title as well.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. You may proceed.
Sidoos Masi. Yeah, I'd like to move this bill as substituted on the floor, 334 dash 37, to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on that motion.
I will allow you to proceed.
Sidoos Masi. And, all right, so Bill 334 is introduced by myself, and this was a bill that was sent to us by the Attorney General. And of course, the intent, as it states in the title, was to remove clouds on the existing leases issued by the Chamor Land Trust Commission. As you, many of you know, since 2018, the Attorney General did a review of some of the leases that had been brought to the media's attention from the Chamor Land Trust, and then they ended up doing a complete review of almost all the leases that they had at that time and categorized them as void or voidable. And so, the Commission tried to ratify some of those leases that were voidable by taking action, where the Commission itself did not act and only a director had acted. So they did some of these things, but it seems that on further review, other issues have come up, and we've got a huge number, even different from the 2018 numbers, of void or voidable leases. And while the Commission is, of course, working towards new leases, it's trying as well to take care of some old lease issues because without those people who had been put on the void list of their leases are not effective, they're not able to continue to do what a normal lessee would do, pursue utilities, pursue construction, and different things like that. So, the Commission has been very hesitant, and it's pretty much between the Attorney General, the Commission, and our committee been our preference not to let anybody lose their homes, but to find a way, if possible, to move forward with some kind of justice. And I am going to admit straight off, Bill 334 is going to bring some remedies. It will not bring full justice in every case. Some of these cases are 25 years old, some of them are 20 years old, and it's, we're balancing here, kicking people out or finding a way to allow them to go forward, especially those who've built homes, and allowing the Commission or those tenants to remedy what the problems are so that we can all feel that we are being treated equally as much as possible. Now, this bill, again, it's, we're dealing with issues like this, like leases that were awarded out of order. We're dealing with leases where the applicant switched application type from residential to agriculture and are being deemed void, where an agricultural lease that constructed a residence before it cultivated or developed at least two-thirds of the tract, which is another one of the rules. Awarding a lease on unregistered property, now this is something only the Commission is going to be able to ratify, or to remedy, rather, because only the Commission, only the Chamor Land Trust owners of the property can register these properties. So they have pledged to move forward on that. The Attorney General's office is really key in that, so they've now got that on their agenda as a regular item to pursue the status of unregistered properties. Apparently, we have hundreds of leases on unregistered properties, which was not supposed to happen according to any of the rules or the law. It's also dealing with leases awarded to applicants who failed to provide sufficient documentation to qualify. And so, we've, you know, since 2018, gone through a lawsuit as well, and in the U.S. District Court, it was a lawsuit HUD was suing the Chamor Land Trust for discrimination. That lawsuit was settled. We have very clear eligibility criteria. The eligibility criteria at that, when the settlement was made, was intended to ensure we have an expanded eligibility for applicants, and that is anyone whose property that they had been using or owned was taken. Those people are eligible for, to be beneficiaries of the Chamor Land Trust. So Bill 334 outlines a process to address these legal issues with the existing leases in lieu of requiring the tenant to vacate the property immediately. The CLTC is going to review the leases issued before the passage of this bill, and this only applies to previous leases prior to passage of this bill. Anything going forward, they've got their methodologies pretty straight now, and everyone should be in full compliance going forward. There should be no exceptions, none of these types of cases. That's, that's the goal. So they will review all the leases prior to the passage of this bill, ensure compliance with the terms of the lease. So by a lease, you have terms that you have to comply with. You have to do some things within a certain time, and this is one of the things we, I spoke about earlier in a previous bill. We don't want junk cars. You're not allowed to do that, particularly on agricultural property, not even on residential property, any of that kind of stuff. Not allowed, they're going to be able to enforce. If they have mandated that you do certain things, such as in agricultural leases, to show that you are actually doing agriculture, then they will be able as well to see the terms and enforce those terms. The CLTC is promising to review all of these within two years. They actually think this is long, so they're going to do it sooner. And, but we've put that deadline on them just to ensure, because again, while they're doing this, their small team is also moving forward with new leases. They're processing 25 applicants at a time, making sure they're eligible, sending them through Guam Housing, and hopefully getting some new leases by the end of this year, residential leases. For leases that were issued contrary to regulations but in compliance with the lease terms, the CLTC must issue a new lease if they find, they make these findings by December For leases issued contrary to regulations and not in compliance with the lease, a notice to remediate is going to be issued to that tenant, and they will provide the lessee one year to comply, and they must comply within that year, and all of these will be done within a certain timeframe. Lessees failing to come into compliance will face appropriate legal actions. They will be evicted. That's pretty much the end result. We give you a chance to remediate the problems. You remediate, or you are evicted. If you do remediate, you're issued a lease, you're able to use that lease, and they will continue to be answerable to the terms of the lease. Of course, because the bill is received by Attorney General, we also received testimony from the Attorney General in support of the bill. The Attorney General has testified that the bill addresses approximately 2,800 null and void and problematic leases where tenants jumped the line or switched lease priorities They acknowledge that addressing these issues is going to be challenging, particularly when it comes to removing tenants from their homes. This is never going to be an easy job for any agency, but hopefully, with the assistance of the Attorney General, they can't do this without the Attorney General's office, so this is really key, that they will be able to enforce these provisions. The Acting Administrative Director, Joey Cruz, says that they can do what is mandated by this bill. They will be able to complete these tasks within the timeframes provided. He's also hoping, I think, that these can be done actually quicker than the timeframes that we have provided. Of course, there were concerns, including Commissioner Herrera, and he says what we are doing by this bill is forgiving past errors related to these land leases, and these are complex. We're also pushing the land trust to remedy errors such as non-registration of property, and we are pushing the tenants to remedy things that are within their control to remedy. There are things that we will not be remedying here, but we just, this is what I'm asking my colleagues to consider. So there was some testimony at the hearing. What about those who cheated, you know, got some connections to get them their lease? In order to resolve that truly, they would need to do pretty much a mini-trial. They would need to see the facts. They would need to call in witnesses. They would need to know anything, everything that happened, in some cases, 20 or 25 years ago. And so, when I asked for a proposal to deal with those, because it was discussed in the public hearing, the Attorney General sent me a proposal that would cost $1 million. So, I am not proposing that we do that today, even though I share the sentiment of everyone on Guam that things that are not unfair, believe me, I think that's why it's taken us so long to resolve these leases, is because we want justice, we want fairness, particularly when it comes to our land. But it's either we're going to tie everyone else up, trying to remedy those few cases, trying to investigate those few cases, or we're going to move forward. So I believe that we've come to a compromise where we move forward, but if they find clear evidence of some kind of criminal mischief, that of course goes to the Attorney General's office. There's nothing to prevent that. If they find ethics violations, there is nothing to prevent them from acting on those as well, or reporting those to the Ethics Commission. But those are pretty much our remedies at this point, unless we're going to tie up this whole land trust and try to do, you know, these investigations within this department for past actions. Now, don't forget, a lot of this stuff was done by directors. We've seen these revolving directors, and actually, almost all of these things were signed off on by directors, and this is one of the issues with the trust, not the board itself. The Commission was not the ones acting in a lot of the cases. So going forward, of course, we've shorted that up. The Commission, they are the ones, according to the Attorney General, the law, the rules and regs, they must act. No director can act alone. In addition, they must act on other leases going forward and not just spend all their time trying to rectify those of the past. So really, we're hoping this is going to be a workable situation. We're putting as many resources as we can towards this. I think they could use as many resources as we can find for them, but I think this bill is actually going to back them up in a huge way to move forward. And the beauty of it is, you know, despite how angry we are at what might have happened in the past, we have people. This is their only home. We will be able to give them a lease. They will be able to live like actual tenants, not live like criminal outlaws. They will be able to move forward with their real lives and with some kind of counting on us that we are not going to evict them tomorrow. That's really the difference. That's the big shift for our generation to deal with. And another thing that, you know, was brought to my attention that really made me think about it a lot was, a lot of those who applied for this program in 1995 are aged already. They're already old, and, you know, prosecuting them, our former directors, is really a whole other world. But we have a new generation who may have relied on some of the actions of the board, some of the actions of previous directors, and this is a way to allow them to move forward in as fair a way as possible. So we will address, as soon as possible, those 8,000 applicants that still are on waiting lists, and I believe we are able to do this. If they just keep on with their methods of, you know, one batch at a time, one batch at a time, keep processing those applicants, we're going to clear them all, and we will be able to assign land, or we can get the USDA infrastructure in, we will put in sewer, we can divide the land up smaller, and we will get tracts at a time of residential leases going while we take care of these 2,800 prior leases that are, that are problematic. So, all of this working together, I hope will move the land trust forward in a big way for the next decade. It will not cover every issue, such as ones where they issued a lease on a property that they never even owned. They issued lease on federal property or ancestral lands property or private property. Of course, those are a whole other issue, but those are exceptions. So this will take care, I believe, of the bulk of the problematic leases that the Chamor Land Trust has, and I'm asking my colleagues to please help me to get this passed. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the bill, Bill 344 dash 37. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. If I could ask Speaker Tulahe a few questions with regards to the bill?
Please proceed.
I wanted to inquire, Madam Speaker, with regards to the compliance issue, and of course, I can understand the need to want to legitimize this process and try to get some sense of order of what has actually been a rather chaotic history with the Chamor Land Trust. With regards to these lease agreements, if they are not in compliance, is that, is compliance going to be required before these leases are formalized and legitimized?
Madam Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I'll yield, and yes. So if, if they're, you know, complied with the law and everything, but their lead, they haven't complied with lease terms, then they will absolutely be required to comply with lease terms. Those will be enforced.
And I noticed the bill references with regards to if acreage is larger than what was authorized. Will that also, I mean, are there any funds put aside to do actual surveys to verify and make sure? Because I understand that when, in the past, when some of these leases were given, no surveys were provided, and in some cases, obviously, the applicants may not have had the financial ability. And in some cases, obviously, the applicants may not have had the financial ability to do surveys on this property. And so what they may have thought their boundaries were or what they actually are are very different. Does the land trust have funds to address the survey to put those issues in compliance? So the exact areas of the lots that were authorized is actually what the recipients have, again, before they formalize these lease agreements?
I think on those individual, you know, where is my boundary cases, that might be something different outside of this bill. That's just a matter of where exactly is the boundary. It's a matter of when they get enough funds for surveying, they will survey based on priorities. And I am sure they will get to all of those eventually. But I think the problem we're trying to deal with is, I was not aware until this year that there was a whole list of properties. I thought there was only one or two, because the audit shows one or two. But apparently, the audit only did a sampling. There are, I want to say, over 1,800 leases, agricultural leases, where the amount of area that was given, acreage that was given for these agriculture areas is completely inconsistent. They've, they're all over the place. Some are, it's supposed to be right now under the statute up to half an acre. That's the max. But like I said, there's 1,800 that exceed that acreage. So the Tomorrowland Trust has been, anyways, with the back and forth, what we came up with in the bill is that those who are farming right now, and if they can prove otherwise compliance, particularly the agriculture portion, they're going to be allowed to continue until they transfer this lease to a successor. So once they're going to transfer their lease, all the leases are going to come back into this regular acreage so that we don't stop them from farming. In some acre, in some cases where they're exceeding two acres, we're going to require them to enter into a commercial lease. But immediately, no one will be kicked out. They'll be allowed to continue. They're just going to have to, when they, if it transfers, they're going to be required to reduce the acreage down so that they're more compatible with, more consistent with each other.
I have another question, Madam Speaker, with regards to the agricultural leases, because that's certainly an area of concern where there has been some abuse, probably in some cases considerable abuse with regards to the property. Some recipients are under the impression that they're given a certain amount of property to subdivide, as if it were, you know, their own personal property subdivided sometimes among their children. And instead of actual agricultural activity occurring on this property, I mean, of course, I understand they're entitled to a family home to live in and, you know, be able to grow their crops either for their own consumption or for, you know, to be able to grow this and also be able to sell and have income for their family. What if the Tomorrowland Trust determines in their assessment that absolutely no agricultural activity has been occurring on the property or no evidence of that? Is the land trust going to cancel those leases? Or is the land trust going to give the opportunity to these individuals to actually work towards compliance within a certain timeframe? Because again, I have no argument about the need for the property for these purposes. But it's been very disturbing, Madam Speaker. And as I've mentioned, I've had the opportunity to actually go through these lease agreements and actually see some of these properties where there has been such flagrant, you know, evident abuse and misuse of Tomorrowland Trust's land, and that's very bothersome. And I don't want in any way that we're legitimizing this process without ensuring and requiring compliance. And then, you know, unfortunately, there has to be a consequence. If not, we're seeing junk cars growing on these properties. These properties are being trashed. These properties are being used by others, sometimes subleasing or sub-renting their properties, which was never the intention. Some of them don't even live on these properties but are giving them to others that would not otherwise be eligible to use it and abuse it, shall we say? And that's a concern. So and certainly in passing this bill, which I recognize what the, you know, possible benefits are in the legislation you're proposing, I also want to make sure at the other end that compliance with these lease agreements are upheld. Because as I've mentioned time and time and time again, there are many on Guam and also in the mainland. Goodness, we have cousins, family, friends in the U.S. mainland should they desire to return to Guam, who would be eligible to apply, would be eligible recipients of land trust property that will never, ever, ever have that opportunity, because land is finite on Guam. And they will never have the opportunity, ever have land of their own perhaps, short of actually saving and maybe purchasing property on Guam. So I definitely want to see the land trust be far more aggressive, because the land trust is even just as responsible as those recipients that have not, you know, addressed proper compliance. The land trust has allowed this also to happen by not properly regulating the use of this property. So how would that be addressed? If they see there's no evidence or if there's violation, are they going to request that that be corrected? Or in some cases, if it's real flagrant abuse, are they simply going to cancel those leases or not simply move forward with implementing them if they find there's flagrant abuse?
The, the bill requires that they're going to make a finding. They're going to put that in writing. They're going to issue that to, these are for people without a valid lease right now. If you have a valid lease and the commission right now can do whatever it wants. It can kick you out, it can do anything, because your lease is valid and you're just not complying with it. These are for cases where the leases might not be valid. They're reviewing them, and if they determine that you're not in compliance with lease terms, they're going to issue you a notice to remediate. And it identifies what your non-compliant terms are, and it gives you time to remediate those. And then they're very strict about the time. If it's not remediated, I think it's one year, then you're out.
If I can ask one last question, Madam Speaker. What will be the enforcement mechanism if ultimately these leases are given and compliance is not addressed? What enforcement capabilities does the land trust have to, if in some extreme cases actually would require the removal of that individual from that property for whatever reason that they may not be in compliance after they've been given these opportunities? What capability, what actual capability does the, you know, does the land trust have to execute that?
Well, it's going to have the same capability that it has now, but it has not exercised yet. And that is going to definitely require assistance of an attorney general, very much so. That's why I think they've been hesitant in the past because of the turnover of directors and attorneys general to really go after some of these people. But there's nothing to prevent them from doing that legally. I'm pretty sure they will do all the notices that are required by law, and then they will have to file a court action to do that.
Well, I appreciate Speaker Terlachy. You're responding to my numerous questions I have, and thank you, Madam Speaker. I just think this is something we need to be mindful. I understand the need of wanting to legitimize these leases. I mean, it's unfortunate, this is a substantial amount of leases have been in violation. But, you know, this attests to the unfortunate history, even though the vision and desire of the original founders of the land trust in wanting to provide an opportunity for the native Tremoros as well as those that were determined in 1950 to be eligible, to be able to be recipients of the land trusts. But unfortunately, you know, it's really sad reality to see that in so many cases, probably an overwhelming number of these cases, there's been a misuse of the land trust property. I myself have not a recipient of Tomorrowland Trust, nor have I applied, nor will I apply. But again, I just want to ensure that as we move forward, you know, this gift to which we have been given, that the legislature has provided to ensure the importance of the Tomorrowland homeland. And I'm, you know, like I said, it's very odd that I would be an advocate for the Tomorrowland Trust, knowing its history. And I hope colleagues be mindful that as we're doing this and wanting these recipients to comply with these new requirements so that they can legitimize these lease agreements, that you're also mindful in how you use or misuse, shall I say, Tomorrowland Trust land. That was very evident to me less than a month ago when we included in the Budget Act mandating, requiring essentially a Tomorrowland Trust commission to negotiate with a very specific organization. It's actions like that, and also, once again, us interceding soon with regards to the golf course issue. You know, we either believe in this land trust or we don't. We either believe in the ability of our Tremoros and their descendants and those eligible to really have the rights to this property and ensure that decisions are being made, including those with commercial properties, are intended and revenues from that is intended to go to the benefit of those recipients. But every time we think it's convenient for us to abuse our power, which we some have a tendency to do with no reservation, we discredit the whole process. We can't be fully one thing on one side and fully one thing on the other side and divide ourselves. As I said, we either believe in it or we don't. And I'm not opposed at all, Madam Speaker, to trying to correct the misdeeds of the past. I mean, at some point, we all want to move on and ensure that, you know, the intended purposes of these lands are actually used for what they're intended for and that the recipients can benefit from them. But also mindful to those that have it, please don't abuse what you have, because there are many, many people that will never have land here to call their own or to say, "I have a lease for this property," or "this is something that my children or grandchildren through the process," which the process does allow for, can continue to pass on. Because your heirs will be eligible, you know, if they go through the proper process, they could be eligible to continue having the lease on that property for the future use of their descendants. So again, you know, Madam Speaker, when it comes to money and land, wow. Even in families on Guam, that's the kind of stuff that, you know, separates families. But, you know, if we do it the right way with the right intentions and properly implementing the law as it was envisioned, I think we can get on track. It's going to take a lifetime, probably more, to correct what has been a very unfortunate history with the Tomorrowland Trust, including the misuse and abuse of officials that have been given the opportunity to serve in the land trust. And that's even more unfortunate. That doesn't speak well for us. It really does not speak well for us than what otherwise with the visionary, you know, individuals that sponsored this legislation like Paul Bredalio had wanted to see or, you know, our former colleague, Ungit, who sometimes I thought was incredibly radical. But, you know, his intention of what he needed to do, he probably needed to be to bring these issues to light. And how sad that this is the outcome of where we are now that we have years to go by and measure the progress of the implementation of the land trust. But so be it. I mean, there's nothing we can do to undo the damage of the past. But hopefully, moving forward, we can, we can see the desired compliance so that, especially for those, like I said, who will never have the opportunity to have land here on Guam to either call their own or have a lease agreement to call their own for a time. We don't want to see this continued abuse. We want to see compliance, and we want to see that those that have been given the opportunity, you know, really properly implement it for their benefit and for that of their families, because it's very unfair for those that will never get a chance. It's unfair for those that are still waiting. You know, 25 years can be a lifetime. A lot of those that applied in 1995 are in their senior years. And they themselves probably now are no longer looking at a future of being able to develop or live on this property for residential purposes or physically may not be able to do any, any type of farming, because it's taken so long. They've had to wait so long. So for those that don't have that opportunity, I don't think we want to see those that have been given those opportunities, you know, the misuse and abuse of this gift that has been given to them. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to ask the questions and comment with regards to this bill.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. On the bill, Bill number 334-37. Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and listening intently to the speakers and just wanting to see how we can get resolved to this. I do have several questions for the good author, if she would like to yield, please.
Please proceed.
My first set of questions has to do with item three, which is, begins on line seven, page three. "A new addition to this measure that was not in the version reported out by the Committee on Land." Then, starting on line 12, page three, "The new language spells out what can happen with leases that are larger than allowed by law." So to begin, this provision states that a leasing whose lease exceeds the authorized acreage limits in law shall be deemed in full compliance of their leases as long as they are otherwise in compliance with other lease obligations and terms. So my first question is, what is the acreage limit this provision refers to?
Speaker, do you yield to the question?
Thank you. So currently, the bills, I mean, the law has been amended, and today, the acreage limits are as follows. For subsistence agricultural or aquaculture farming, it's half, one quarter acre to a half an acre, half an acre max. For commercial agriculture or aquaculture use, it's 20 acres max. For grazing use, it's 20 acres max. For residential lot, it's one acre. But these have changed over the years. So when it first started out, they were very different. And I have a whole analysis of which years it changed. And so that's why they were, they were much larger. So these are the smallest they've ever been. There were much larger acreage allowed back then under the law. And some of these leases were issued pursuant to those, that law, where they were allowed to be larger. Some of them were issued contrary to the law even and exceeded what the law had allowed. I don't have those in front of me. I can find it in my file, I'm sure. But the acreage limits, like, for example, subsistence agriculture was, I think, up to 20 acres at one point instead of the half acre that it is now. So I hope that's the correct answer to your question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that. So if the limit was supposed to be the assessed, I mean, the acres as announced, how much larger did we award these non-compliant leases to be? And, and I really, so I get it clear. I ask because if the oversight was just a couple of feet or maybe even a couple of hundred feet, I might be able to accept that mistake and move on. But I'm concerned whether this legislature will be giving the all-clear and endorsement of this mistake if a lease granted an applicant substantially more or even one acre above, or worse yet, double the limit, double what the limit was supposed to be. So before we pass a provision that essentially accepts these mistakes as allowable, I want to, I guess, Madam Speaker, I want a clear record of just how, how bad these mistakes were when the CLTC in the past approved leases larger than what the law authorized to be. So maybe just interaction, or if the speaker would yield?
Yes. This is the part that really surprised me. I thought we had a couple that were out of the bounds. But no, there are like 1,800 that are out of the bounds that exceed by far half an acre. Some of them exceed 20 acres. That was the max ever. Some of them, they're just different. But the problem is, they were done so long ago. They were ratified, and they have, so the premise is, if you'll see in what we've tried to write here, it says that they're going to comply with the acreage limits of this section as enacted at the time of original award. So of course, if you were awarded back, you know, 25 years ago and you were allowed to have that size, you're enacted. And, but if you're exceeding what you were supposed to have at the time of the award, that's why we're putting in, or a maximum of two acres. We're bringing you down to two acres. And this is going to be enforced, not later than a transfer of the lease to other than a spouse. So in other words, some of these actually are big farmers, and they're actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. And we're not trying to kick them out. So we're going to allow that applicant, who's still using it as a farm, to continue until he transferred that to a successor or some other transfer. Then that's over. Then we bring them back down to the lot sizes consistent with all the others.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for that clarification. And again, Madam Speaker, I'll go on with a couple of more questions. Literally just trying to find the, I guess, what we're doing here as an august body is rectifying and just bringing the history, but also rectifying what was not supposed to be there to begin with. But anyways, the following sentence, which begins at the end of line 15, talks about what will happen when these applicants with two large leases get a new lease. So... So specifically, Madam Speaker, it says, the new lease must comply with the statutory limits on size. And it says that the compliance must happen no later than a transfer of the lease to someone other than a spouse. My question would be, under what circumstances would an applicant get a new lease? And why would the standard be different for a lease that is being transferred, being transferred to a spouse? Would this provision mean, at the end of the process, that there will be two leases? The original one that is too large by mistake and then the new one that is compliant with the law? Please help me.
I'm going to try. And it is a kind of, it's technical. So this whole bill is kind of designed that we're going to issue new leases. So instead of going back and saying anything retroactive, we're going to say, going forward, if you can comply with these things, you get a new lease, a real, a good lease, one that's consistent with the law, so no one can challenge it. And, but, these are the requirements. So for these people, it's already that, if, see, subsection 2, it begins with, if the lessie is, well, subsection 1 begins, was issued contrary to regulations of the commission, right? And then number 2, but is otherwise in full compliance, meaning you're farming, you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, then we're going to issue a new lease. Or, yeah, the lessie, a notice to remediate. And if you remediate, then they're going to get a new lease. Sorry, I think that's the wrong section. Let me get to the right section. For those, yes, so they're going to be able to, they're going to, they have a lease, and again, according to C, they're supposed to be, these are people who need to be issued a new lease already. So they're going to be issued a new lease, and yes, this lease is going to have this provision in it now, that if, if transfer upon transfer, the acreage limits are going to be different.
So is it one or two?
It's, it's two. Sorry, it's three, I think. Three, under subsection 3.
No.
One or two, what, I'm sorry, one or two leases?
Yeah.
Like, many of these lessies have a lease right now. So what the bill's doing is saying, we're going to issue you new leases. Anyone, there are like, according to Mr. Cruz at the Chamor Land Trust Commission, there are like 19 leases that are fully in compliance and valid. I know, it sounds, it's, it's very disheartening and sickening, really. But all the rest have to be reviewed and pretty much issued a new lease that is in compliance with the law. So, including these.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I promised just a couple more. The following sentence, which begins on 22, says that the CLTC and the leasee are authorized and then to enter into a lease modification at any time to bring the acreage into compliance with the law. But given how Item 3 begins with the validation of these mistaken leases that are otherwise compliant with the terms and obligations, is it correct to say that neither the CLTC nor the leasee is required to negotiate a modification to bring these lease agreements into compliance with the acreage limits?
I would say that's correct. So you can modify your acreage limits, right? Because let's say you've been issued a lease for 20 acres, but you know you're not going to be able to farm 20 acres, you never have, so they're going to take away your lease if you don't remediate that. And if you can't, then if I'm them, I would navigate down to a lease that I can actually farm. And so then those cases, they are allowed by this bill to negotiate that down. But if they don't, we're not mandating the original lessie, the person with a kind of a defective lease right now, to get out. But if they don't farm it, they will lose their entire lease.
Thank you for that, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, again, I will ask the good speaker and author to answer a couple of more questions. And because these provisions are repeated later in the bill, I would like to ask the good author again, where the language came from, if it was something brought up to her by the Chamor Land Trust Commission or constituents? Were these provisions raised during the public hearing? If so, why weren't they included in the version reported out by the committee? So I just want to see where that is from.
I will yield to the question. If you could reiterate which parts you're talking about?
It says, the, I, the, you said in the language, right, that, that the provisions are repeated later in the bill, and if you look at it, right?
Oh, yes.
Based on the previous one. And I'm asking you where the language came from? If it was something that was brought up to you by the CLTC or constituents? Were these provisions raised in the public hearing? If so, why weren't they included in the version of the?
Yes. It's a good question. Thank you for asking. So pretty much, it's what's the difference between the original and the subbill and why? Where did those changes come from? Okay, so first of all, the big changes, we added an entire new section 3. So, and section 3 looks almost identical to section 2.
Two, right.
It adds a new section to our, to chapter 75, whereas section 2 adds a new section to chapter 75A. So if you remember, when we had the settlement, we kept all the laws and rules intact, but we had to create an entire new chapter, an entire new chapter of rules, almost identical, but to go forward. So the old laws and the old rules applied to those leases prior to the settlement. And the new laws and the new rules, the chapter 75A and the rules with the A in it, the big A, those are all since the settlement moving forward. So, so they're pretty much, because of time, they were judged by two criteria. So, so that's why there's a new section 3. That was pointed out to me by, and I confer with the Land Trust, that we need, we need this new section 3, we need to also deal with the old ones as well, because we've got leases in both categories. The other change that we made in the subbill was this part that you read earlier about the acreage limits. Because when we tried, I tried to get, you know, so I can make my talking remarks, how many leases are we actually affecting? And the number just kept looking weird to me, like, why is it not enough? Why, why so few? And then that's when the, I was first informed that that's because we have over 1,800 leases where they exceed acreage requirements, where the original bill was not even addressing that. But those, well, they, it did by saying that they were noncompliant with the existing law. But, you know, with a lot of back and forth with the AG, you know, I wanted to make sure if they, if they were in compliance with law when they got their lease, then of course they should be recognized. And if they were, you know, and then what was the remedy?
Right.
And that's when we got the whole list of leases and all the different acreage amounts. And we're trying to just narrow down on a way for the Chamor Land Trust to deal with that one problem. When we were giving them a broad, any violations, you know, you just deal with it. But this one, we had to be very specific, because the acreage was so, such a, to me, a particular category of problems, that we wanted to be very sure they know exactly what to do in those cases.
Thank you very much to the good author from Jonya, Speaker Terlahe. And really, Madam Speaker, I was going to ask that last question, a last question, but she had already answered it. And my take to this is, I just wanted to understand why these substantive changes are necessary and what would happen if the new substitute language is not approved for this body and making sure that whatever we're trying to do moving forward is going to be right and is going to be fair. And it's going to, I guess, share that reasonable application moving forward. Again, the intent by our past leaders was to make sure that those who were landless and had an opportunity to thwart this, this application process and be a part of it, will be, so that they could be able to build their own home, or to be able to farm on, on the lands that the government has provided for them. And that is a part of the basic tenet, Madam Speaker, of what our government of Guam needs to do, to provide for the health, welfare, and safety of our, of our people and make sure that the opportunities are there, if, if, if the government has this, to provide for our community. And I truly appreciate the good author of this bill. I'm hoping, if anything, she could share with me the inclusion of sponsorship to this. But really, being able to ask her all these questions and that justification and being able to share it, this is not easy. And like the previous speaker from Chalapago said, we're trying to fix what was decades old of, of, oh, I'm not, I don't want to be a pessimist, but problems that happened in the past, right? We start from here, we move forward, we work on getting these things right so that our people can benefit for all the right reasons and for what our, our leaders before us in this august body literally meant, like the late Paul Bredalio. So, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to ask these many questions and for the good author for literally taking the time to explain it so our listening audience can understand why, how, and what we have to do to move forward to right any, any discrepancies that were done in the past. So, thank you and hope the author can consider me. Sijus Massey.
Sijus Massey, Madam Vice Speaker. On the bill. Bill 334-37, on the bill. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker, and Beba Betness to the people of Guam and to my colleagues. Rise in support of the bill, attended the public hearing, and, ooh, it's quite a situation we're in here. I commend the Chair of the Land Committee, as she continues, it reminds me of that old game they used to have at Bobby McGee's. I don't know the name of it, but it's the, the groundhogs, and they pop up, and you hit one groundhog, and then one pops over here, and you hit that one, and then two pop over here. That's what the work has been like with the Chamor Land Trust, has been so many issues that have paralyzed the trust and prevented a lot of things from moving forward. And the speaker has continued to just chip away at those issues, bill by bill, law by law, and question by question from the colleagues in here. And this one is, boy, it reminds me of a little bit of GDOE when, and we're still having problems with the ACs, but there was a point late last year where the vendor for the air conditioning contract was so far behind what the performance standards were. But we were faced with a situation where I think GDOE management had come to a crossroads and they had to make a decision, okay, there's so many problems with this contract, but if we tear it up and hold them to the performance and throw it out and start all over again, it's going to be almost, you know, it's going to be worse than continuing to move forward. So that's how I feel about this bill. There were just so many infractions, whether they were, you know, willful, innocent, I don't know, but there were definitely many that were not innocent, that in my opinion were plain and simply corruption. And I know, because this is one of the issues that we covered in the media, specifically the Baragata Heights fiasco, the controversy. And it just frankly pissed me off, because, you know, how did we get in this situation? They took our land. They took our land, and now they're trying to take our Senai. But they took our land. You know, on my grandmother's side, I'm a Cabesa Flores and a Titanoe, and we always used to joke that we really are Titanoe, because we don't have land. But we used to. Used to. My grandmother's family was one of the property owners of Radio Baragata, and that land was taken from the family. And went from having that land in the family to being one of these families where you're now struggling to buy land to build a house on. And now we have nothing. We have no land, we have no house, and there's so many other people who are in the same situation because of these unjust land takings. And so the victory for the Chamor Nation, Paul Bredalio, Ungit, was that they created this as a way to bring justice to our people. And so it's so frustrating and it angers me that we were able to get this program, that it's been challenged many times and we've been able to sustain it and keep it alive even under, you know, threat of, from the federal government. But to then have our own people, land, and it's called the Land Trust, and it's like our own people couldn't be trusted to handle this program, because up at Baragata Heights, what you had was, you had people who work in these land agencies, who have intimate knowledge of the good parcels, who have maybe surveyed the parcels, and they were the ones, in some cases, not all 1,800, but in some cases, who were jumping the line, who were breaking the rules, who knew all the loopholes, who knew how to wiggle into the wiggle room so that they could serve themselves, ahead of the thousands of people who continue to wait up to this day. I remember that day, way back in 1995, right? Way back in 1995, I was working at Leo Palace Golf Course, earning $7.25 an hour, which that's a lot of money back in that time. And a lot of my coworkers were talking about, oh, we're going to take off tomorrow, because we're going to go wait in line, you know, we're going to go wait in line, and we're going to get our land. And I didn't go. Because I thought, oh, I'll just, you know, just take care of it later, just go another time. Ended up never going and, you know, just ran into a couple of those coworkers now who are, you know, have moved on, and guess what? They're still waiting. And in this body, we have to do what we can to move things forward for the, who are supposed to be the real beneficiaries of this program. You know, we have thousands of people out there. Some went and lined up and had their place noted, and then they, they got lucky, or they worked hard, and they bought a house, bought land on their own, and now it's pointless for them to be waiting. But for this, this Baragata Heights scenario, it's unfortunate, because in the hearing, what had ended up happening was, it was revealed that, you know, there've only been a couple of these leases that they've been able to correct. And so I think the question for me, as I decide voting on this bill, is what's going to be the greater good? To forgive these, you know, wrongdoings, again, some of which may have been intentional, gaming the system, and others may have simply been, you know, oh, they'll just help you, and you're going to switch with your auntie, and we'll get your lot, and, you know. That's fine, but it's just frustrating when we have this opportunity, this restorative justice, and we run into all these roadblocks, many of which are, you know, self-created. But the good Chair of the Land Committee continues to do what, what needs to be done to move forward. And, you know, the Attorney General is, well, we all know the struggles that the Land Trust and many agencies have had in retaining, you know, good counsel, retaining any counsel, for that matter. But they got a good lawyer over there at the Land Trust, who has been, you know, detailed by the AG to assist them with a lot of questions, and they're getting a lot of good answers. And this bill is a result of that work. So while I rise in support of it, I don't want to let the, the sins of the past, especially when they're committed by people who we trusted to be moving this program forward, to benefit many who are without land, who are without homes, who are without opportunity because of our unique history of these unjust land takings. So. So, while I do rise in support of the bill, I'm, I'm still just a little bit troubled about what we may be forgiving moving forward. So, Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Senator Barnett, for that. That was hard. Thank you. I'm, I'm going to address Senator Duñez at this time. You may proceed. And if anybody else wishes to speak, please let me know.
Sijus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I concur with really a lot of the comments and the questions that have been asked on Bill 334. It is frustrating, you know, it's, it's frustrating because I know that when I was at Guam Housing Corporation, you know, a lot of, that really is the, the premier lender for these properties that are not fee simple. And I can't tell you how many people came in to try to get a loan, to build a home, and only to find out, they would go through surveys, find out the surveys were wrong, the contiguous properties to them where people have built, they can't build because there's overhangs that are encroaching on the property and it's just, it's, it's a mess. Without belaboring the points and going over a lot of the good points that were made, I just, because I can't find it in the bill and I just want to ask the author one question.
Please proceed.
So, what I'm, what I'm hearing and what I'm reading and going through the report and the way the bill was prepared and, and the legal mechanism is the remedies, once all of the, basically this looks like a carte blanche, you know, forgiveness, I guess, and then moving forward when the properties are to be transferred other than to a spouse, then the rules and regulations and the, and the, the methods by which the distribution and the accountability towards what you're using the land for basically will be enforced at that time. Is that, is that a kind of a clear picture of what would happen here? But, but, but in terms of what it currently is, is being used for, operated for, it would be, there still would have to comply, but yet in terms of acreage and, and what the, what was designed to do would, would be remedied through basically congruity or handing down other than a spouse. And I can, I understand the spouse thing. I mean, there was also a major case a couple of years ago where a spouse had to be verified in terms of their eligibility. There's been a lot of back and forth, but am I kind of close on that?
Speaker, Terlahe, thank you, Senator Duñez. Would you like to yield to that?
I would like to yield. Thank you and thank you for the question. So, the intent is that there were some diversions, like they were out of order when they were awarded their lease, but they were awarded a lease. They were, they switched from residential to agriculture, but they were awarded a lease. They, they got a lease for property that was unregistered. That's not supposed to happen, but they got a lease. They got a lease without proving they were eligible. I don't know how that happened, but that happened. So, they're going to go back for all of these who they can and give them a new lease, move them forward, in other words, if, you know, but with every lease, you must comply with that lease. Now, if you have a lease, but you're not complying with it, so that's one category. The other category is those leases that exist and they're not complying. And farming is the easy one to point out, right? If you're not complying with the farming requirements, no, this does not allow you to go forward. You have to mediate that before you can get a new lease or you don't get a new lease. You're just out. Or, and that part about, so the uses that are required of you on this property, like residential also has requirement use, right? And agriculture has requirements for use of the property, so you must comply. You either comply now or you have to comply in a year or you, you lose your entire lease. But for the acreage, because those were the ones to me that was like a unique issue. If you've got a guy doing already a, you know, 10-acre farm and he's complying with his lease that says he's going to lease on this 10 acres, we didn't want to harm him. Again, these leases were given to them, they relied on them, they put everything they had into it. So, we don't want to harm him. So, we're going to allow him to continue to use that 10 acres if he's in compliance, but when it transfers to other than, only that acreage requirement is kind of like going to be enforced later for those who are in compliance with the use. It doesn't change their requirement to comply with the use, it only says, we're not going to take away your acres. That's really the only thing that that one exception does.
So, yeah, that's what I was curious, just a follow-up to that. So, essentially, what that does then is, is, is really kind of weeds out those that are, that, that are, you know, not and had acquired the property, not compliant, but you're not going to penalize somebody who is currently active and using the acreage and doing what the intent of the issuance was for. And it, you know, I guess that, that makes sense. And I, and I guess what it comes down to, and, and this will be the test, I guess, you know, as generations go forward will be, you know, will, and I guess since it's been crafted, you know, in, you know, in, in concert with Attorney General, hopefully there's not a legal mess down the line where individuals are, you know, subsequent beneficiaries are arguing that the law did something to them, you know, in terms of what the original issuance. That will be an issue for down the road. I'm sure it will, you know, if it's litigated, be litigated, but this should be durable enough as we pass it. But, you know, I, it's, it's kind of interesting, Madam Chair, because there were suggestions before, you know, I've heard as radical suggestions as just remove it temporarily, get an administrative law judge, adjudicate all these cases and start from scratch. And, you know, that's a pretty radical, you know, stretch, but I gotta say that I guess this is a piecemeal approach to maybe that, you know, that endeavor is to, is to basically go through and, and get this accomplished, but that kind of a, a term of art sometimes, at some point it'll all come out in the wash. But the only really strong redeeming factor to this exercise outside of the abuses and really the kind of the immoral, really, in my opinion, abuses of, of the opportunity to really realize something that is unique to individuals is that those who, and I think we had one of these a couple of meetings, a couple, and a couple of bills that were heard earlier, and even confirmations where a family came down and, and, you know, this, this lady was talking about how she's fought so hard to go in and prove and has had to sit down time and time again with the board to be able to, to prove their compliance and how the acquisition was made. And I guess they must be frustrated with that almost every meeting that they have. So, I guess the redeeming factor is that there are many, many also who did the right thing. And even in spite of that, you know, maybe a victim of just the process that just seems like when it was abused, didn't have the integrity, but yet now that the integrity there is there, it penalizes some who may have gone and, and done it the right way. But now, at least it gives them their justice. And I guess the justice to weed out whatever was not done correctly will happen when the subsequent beneficiaries come, come to bear. And I guess they're going to really have to do their due diligence and their work now to ensure that once this goes into play, all those who are issued those leases that are beyond what was intended are certainly up to par in doing what they're supposed to be doing, otherwise they face corrective action and without it, they're removed. So, I think most of us who are going to vote for it are going to vote for it somewhat begrudgingly, but in the back of our mind, using that, that benevolence, I guess, in our heart and our belief that those who are compliant shouldn't be commingled and that we have to, piece by piece, as one of the retiring speakers said, fix up the discrepancies and the mess from improper operations in the past and set the course forward and try to make this trust whole and very productive for the beneficiaries and generations to come. Sijus Massey, Madam Chair.
Buen Pobeto, Senator Duñez, on the main motion. On the main motion, if not. Senator Roy, did you have?
Yes, thank you.
You may, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good afternoon to my colleagues. Hope you guys had a good lunch. Greetings to those who are watching virtually and joining us. I renew my commitment to helping resolve the longstanding issues that persist in the CLTC program. I've stated in public hearings that I think CLTC would probably be better served if it was autonomous, if we granted it autonomy. I think also they need a dedicated legal counsel that is not specially appointed because sometimes there's issues with the appointments, you know, there's other assignments for that SAG to attend to. And unfortunately, in some circumstances, there wasn't any attorney available. But certainly if we had an attorney that was granted for specific to the Chamor Land Trust, I think there'd be so many issues that could be resolved. I mean, land is such a huge issue. Again, it's something that, man, even when you're dead, they're fighting about, unfortunately. And trying to get land into more land trust is like trying to get war claims. So, it, it's, it's my hope that with this legislation, we have some kind of path forward to resolve a lot of the longstanding issues. I've told the Speaker that I remain supportive on any measure that can help amend the Chamor Land Trust program and make it go progressively in the right direction. Earlier, the author stated that it could, the board could evict any tenant if they felt to comply. So, I just wanted to ask again the necessity of this legislation.
Thank you. Speaker, would you like to yield to that?
Yes, I would. Can you please repeat the question?
Yes, what is the necessity of this legislation? If already the board can evict any tenant it wishes to at this time?
Evict?
Well, they can remove them.
Yes, yes, yes. That's actually the whole purpose of the bill because without this bill, the CLT, they have no choice. According to the law, they have to kick them all out. And we counted, there were like 2,800. So, that's really the whole issue. This is their choice. Kick them out or amend the law so that we don't punish those who did everything that they were told to do. They complied with every mandate of the commission at that time and are now told that they're not in compliance or their, you know, lease is void. So, this is really the dilemma that we are in. So, we are trying not to kick them out, although they could kick them out now if we don't change this law. But if we change the law, they will be able to determine whether they're, you know, if it was like commission passed or gave them a lease without, you know, allowing them to skip something, they're going to fix that. Or they're going to tell the lessee to fix it and they're going to give them time to fix it and then if they don't fix it, then that's their recourse is to kick them out. But it gives them a chance to fix it.
Great. Again, I just wanted to clarify that this is not a specific area. This is across the island, right? There's numerous parcels of land that the Chamor Land Trust has on its hands, correct?
Correct. So, perfect point also because this only deals with those who have already been issued leases. This doesn't deal with all of those who are waiting, the, the thousands who are signed up and waiting on the waiting list and those who haven't even signed up because ahead of them is 8,000 people, the whole entire new three generations since 1995, those people. Yeah.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Canatz?
Can I clarify also that this legis, these individuals were given lands probably in 1952 to 1975?
Given lands? No. These people are part of the class of people whose lands were actually taken by the US government or, yeah, actually the US government and, but that happened even prior to 1944, 1944, after the war, of course, there was massive land takings, but even prior to that. So, these people know, they, whether they had land or didn't have land in those time periods, I don't think this bill touches anything related to that, only whether they were eligible because they were part of the class that had lands taken from them.
Thank you. Also, one more question regarding successorship. Would these, would this legislation bridge the gap between successorship so that people who have next of kin or probably don't have a next of kin, they can surrender it to the next person that they wish to, not necessarily being related to, but is will to be given the property?
Speaker?
Sijus Massey, I'll, I'll yield to that question. So, it's not in this legislation, but it's in, but maybe a combination of both. In a prior bill that we passed into law, we clarified the successorship. We allowed grandchildren to inherit because the applicants are that old now, where it's their grandchildren who are going to be the ones able to qualify for a loan and get a house built. So, we clarified some of those successor issues that the land trust had been seeing and so this should clarify some of those who are just pending because the law didn't allow a grandchild, for example. So, successorship should be cleared up by that prior law, but this law will also say if you had a lease and they gave it to somebody who was not allowed back then, that this, this is going to take a look and hopefully clarify that, that if you were actually on the successor list that we have now, you're good. If you were, if you complied in every other way, I think they're going to allow that as well, if you're in compliance with your lease.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Canatz?
Great. I just wanted to re-clarify that. I know that we did pass that legislation, but I wanted to make sure that this proposed legislation covers and encompasses everything so that we don't have a hiccup moving forward. So, again, I appreciate the, the response from the previous speaker very much, again, in support of this legislation. I think we also need to look into hiring more people into Chamor Land Trust. The issues are just so big that we kind of have a team of 10 people trying to resolve 28,000 issues. You know, we need to really put some funding sources in the back end because in the front, we know all the issues, but we need to fund the problem. We need to fix it. And I think, you know, like I stated earlier, I think autonomy could help them get more money towards themselves. They can probably navigate a lot of these issues without politics and actually execute what they need to do as a landlord. I also wanted to point out that these properties don't belong to these people, it belongs to the island of Guam and that you're only being like a dollar a year for this property, quote unquote, if you ever got the property, unfortunately. But the program is a very growth program. I think the founding fathers of this program, you know, had a foresight and a vision to really assist our people and unfortunately, this program wasn't fully met in its time because now we've just, again, cost for construction and development of infrastructure has gone astronomically high. So, again, I, I reiterate and re-issue my support to the Speaker on this and, you know, I just want to make sure that this legislation, we really look also into funding Chamor Land Trust so that these proposed legislations aren't dead on arrival and that we actually resolve the issues that are, are really persistent. Again, like the previous Senator Barnett stated, that I think the game he was talking about was whack 'em. And even that, every time you try to whack something, it doesn't, you know, we got another one popping up. There's so many problems with Chamor Land Trust, legal issues, funding issues, again, sometimes limited land, but there's plenty land out there. So, again, I just thank the author. I kindly also ask for co-sponsorship on this legislation so that we can finally have some progress moving forward for our island and our people and the next generation. Thank you again, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Mr. Senator Canatz. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Sabina, I recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, I was at the public hearing and first of all, I want to commend the author for really trying to move forward on a very difficult issue and try, trying to resolve these voided leases. And so, one of the, the testimony that was provided was, or a couple of testimony, one was by Lydia Talu where she testified that a lot of these leases where she testified that a lot of these leases, some of them were awarded because of the connections that people had and their ability to so-called game the system, right? And so, and jump the line. And of course, there are other leases that were granted, you know, I guess mistakenly, but now that they were granted, the leasing has built a home, is, you know, complying with all the regulations that were provided to them. And so, again, yeah, that, it's important to, I guess, there's a distinction that was made for those that actually were doing it in good faith, right? And so I guess the question that I had during the public hearing is, so one of the suggestions by one of those that testified was that maybe there's a way we can tease out the good faith from the bad faith. And maybe this is a question for the author of the bill is, does that still apply with this bill?
Speaker Therese, would you like to yield?
Yes, I'll yield to the question and thanks for the question. That's actually the hardest question, I think, that's been asked. And it is, it's, I don't know. What we've got is a bill that is not going to say anything about corruption. We've got laws that already say if it was done by corruption, refer that to the Attorney General and let them prosecute it. We also have laws that say if it was a violation of the ethical conduct standards for any government agency to give their family over everyone else, that should be referred to the Ethics Commission and to the AG's office. So we've considered other mechanisms, but they all ended up, to me, bogged down in like over a million dollars or huge amounts of many trials and times for the commission to take care of or to hire a special magistrate to do. Or, and in that way, it would really hurt all of those who were innocent. They would all wait in line for those investigations and all that pursuit to take place. Whereas right now, criminal liability can still be pursued, ethical liability can still be pursued. We don't punish those who were innocent, those who complied with directors, complied with commissioners and believed in all good faith that they were doing everything that they were being mandated to do and continue to do that to this day. So there is no specific provision in here, but they are able to pursue that in the existing avenues that we have in the government.
Thank you, Speaker. Senator Perez, does that suffice?
Very much so. And I appreciate the response of the author. And being that said, I rise in full support of this legislation. And, you know, again, I want to thank the author as well as the AG who helped to craft, as well as the Chamor Land Trust, who really put their eagle eye on this bill to make it a sound bill. And, yeah, I commend their efforts. Sisus Massey.
Buen Pobeto, Senator Perez, on the main motion. If there are no one else, Senator Frank Blas, Minority Leader, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I meant, I am really struggling with this bill. And I get it, I understand. I understand and I appreciate and I applaud the author for proffering the idea of how to be able to do this. However, and I don't know, I guess the, my consternation with the bill was is magnified even more by just the very response that was provided right before I spoke. And that while there are mechanisms, and as stated, there are mechanisms to deal with the corruption and the ethical concerns and that this bill doesn't address it. But when I look at page two, line 24, "The lease was issued in a manner contrary to the regulations of the commission." How does that differ from a legal or an ethical concern?
Would you like the speaker to you?
I'm just, I'm speaking, okay? I'm thinking out loud, okay? And I agree, I don't want to put the, like I said, I don't want to put the author in a position, but it's it just, I get it. There were individuals that, and lessees that, yeah, came into compliance or have, or continued to comply. Maybe there are cases where the lessees didn't know that they received their lease contrary to how it was supposed to have been adjudicated, how it was supposed to have been provided to them. But I go back to the concerns that was brought up by the good gentleman from Zonia. You know about his family's property. By the way, Senator Barnett and we're related, the Cabezas, I know. And in that broad, because I'm very familiar with that, you know, with that issue, very familiar with that issue. And you know, the frustrations that were, you know, that have existed for decades. This is an issue that has existed for decades. And while we want to be able to help, I don't know whether I want to be a part of something where it says, well, you know what? Despite what you did wrong and all, okay, and now you have no choice but to do right, what is right? What is then right after you've done wrong? And that's where my struggle is at. Okay, because we have to deal with what was wrong. And as arduous and as onerous and as expensive as it's going to be, is now making right what was wrong, right? My whole concern went back, starts actually, I should have started with this because it is relative to removing legal clouds. You know what the definition of a legal cloud is? Legal cloud is significant evolution in the way law firms and legal departments store access and manage their data. In the digital age, this solution offers a myriad of advantages while raising questions of security and legal compliance. Legal concerns, yes. But when we say legal clouds, I get it, I understand. And one of the concerns that I initially had was, well, there are not that same definition. Legal clouds was used in the, basically, the body of the bill that would go into statute and, oh, it didn't. But that raised the concern for me to delve even more into the legislation and listen even more to the concerns of the legislation. I don't think there's anybody in here that wants to see how we can make, how we can finally deal with this issue. And how this issue should be dealt with. But I continue to struggle with this. I've gotten the calls from people, from individuals who are, you know, affected by this. I've heard the concerns and the problems that exist in trying to be able to move or improve their properties, improve their livelihoods because the existence of this. I've heard that. But for the hundreds of individuals who really want, to no fault of their own, their leases have become questionable. It's the it's the maybe I don't even want to guess as to how many or how little of those leases that were not done consistent with how it should have been done, that were not, that were done grossly contrary to how it should have been done, how they're going to get away or not get away at the expense of everybody else who are trying to make it right. So I needed to express that concern. And hopefully that by some way, you know, there's that assurance because, again, I was concerned when it says, when it was provided that while there are statutes, there are statutes that exist that will deal with the corruption and the unethical behavior. This language in page two, "The lease was issued in a manner contrary to the regulations of the commission." How does that differ? Still struggling with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Minority Leader. If no one else wishes to speak, Speaker Therese, you may close. I apologize. I understand that Speaker Therese was going to close, but Senator San Augustine, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Mine's very simple. You know, I was reading the bill and I was listening to all the testimony and what the author brought up. I like the part, removing the legal clouds. I'm going to ask the author very simple, will this help Chamor Land Trust get it going? And so that everybody that loaded up in 95, to include me? I don't think any of you guys ever applied back then, but I did apply. I was a young guy. I'm just a little bit older than some of you, other than Senator Loane. But, you know, I'm just curious, where's it at? Where's it going? Will this help get it right? Get them to do their job? That's my main concern.
I will ask Senator San Augustine. Speaker Therese, would you like to yield to that question?
The question, yes, I will yield. And the question is, will this help the Chamor Land Trust get it going? I certainly hope so. Or we have wasted, I've pretty much wasted my life in here trying to get this thing to be moving because this is one of those things, like they can move forward and they are going to move forward on new residential and new agricultural leases. But when we've got 2,800 people stuck without ability to get a loan or in typhoons to get assistance, we are just perpetuating poverty and we are perpetuating, you know, unsanitary and unlivable conditions. And that's not what the mission of this purpose was. So absolutely, this is going to help them move their mission, which is getting residential leases with actual residences, agricultural leases where people are actually farming. So yes, I definitely believe this is going to get them going.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator San Augustine?
I'll just add, there are timelines as well. So they're also under mandate to finish this part while they're doing that, they're moving the new residential leases forward.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, again. Senator San Augustine?
And thank you, Madam Speaker. And I thank the author. And, you know, like I've said on many occasions, let's just get her done. If this bill is going to help it, then get it done. And then we can turn to Chamor Land Trust and when they say, well, you know, we got this issue, tap win. Because many of us have made every effort to help them. And the author's done this many, and I've done this on many occasions. And we're running out of reasons to, or excuses on their part. And every one of us here have always wanted to get Chamor Land Trust on the road to success so we can take care of our people. And with that, I ask to be a co-sponsor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Legislative Secretary on the motion. Oh. Are you going to speak on the motion?
On the bill?
Yes. You may proceed, Legislative Secretary.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I appreciate all the information that's coming out. It's good to hear, especially the last question, that we are very hopeful that this will help the CLTC move quickly to address many issues that we've heard over time, time and time again, as the issues continue to grow for this very small agency trying to do a good thing for our people. And I wanted to ask something to clarify. There was a question earlier about the successor clause and what would happen if if this would apply to them. And I wanted to just clarify, is that for all land use permits if the speaker would yield?
Speaker Therese, would you yield to that question by the Legislative Secretary?
I will yield. Do you mean, sorry, can you just clarify that question?
Sure. I think, I believe Senator Canata was asking previously about when CLTC is issuing these leases, you know, we have the statute now that allows for certain successors to take over the land. And is that for all land use permits? So can you just clarify if that applies to every, everyone who may be a successor in these situations?
I think so. I think maybe the use of land use permits is confusing, but for all participants under the CLTC program, that the successor rules that we fixed should apply. And that they should, I feel like there should be very few, if any, issues relative to successors. There's a clear list of who can succeed and in what order of precedence. And after seven years, apparently, there's a rule that they can transfer these to non-successors even, yeah.
Yes, thank you very much. As the author of the bill mentioned, now that folks have had these leases for a long amount of time, we're already at this point in time where they are being passed down to the next generation. And so we have constituents who are concerned that there may be issues and I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you, Legislative Secretary. Senator Tidaway?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to stand and supported this legislation. I didn't, I was not there in attendance. However, I did watch the hearing. I was unable to make it that day. And, you know, it was ironic. Here we have a legislation to go over each property to find out what happened. How did they receive this property? Was it done correctly? Was the process, was it wrongfully issued? And, you know, our good minority leader, Senator Blas, mentioned some of them may not even know that they were doing this process and it was not legal, that they received this property not knowing that they didn't cross the Ts or dot the Is. So it was basically those working at Chamor Land Trust. So my question, many of the questions So my question, many of the questions I had were answered, and appreciate the Speaker of answering them with, with reason and just... But the one question I have is, during this process of verification on these properties, to make them rightfully so and whole, is there going to be any investigation on those individuals who gave out this property or took property wrongfully? On a legal perspective? I mean, I see the, the process here on, in going through the, the guidelines to review these properties, but what about the continued investigation on how it was done? Is there going to be any, addressing any of that?
Speaker Therese, would you like to yield?
Yes, the answer is yes. First of all, the bill requires that in order to remedy any of these leases, they must like investigate them and say, "These are the problems of the lease." In doing that, they're going to see how they got their lease. And there's actually some questions as to why haven't these been prosecuted yet, right? Why weren't they prosecuted since 2018, when the AG brought it up? The AG said they're void, they were issued, you know, without a commission. We had directors issuing leases without any action of a commission, contrary to law. We had directors issuing leases that were like giving more acres than they were supposed to. We had directors giving leases that, with people who were jumping the lines. All, all of those problems came from the issuance of the leases by people who were charged with following the law. So yes, they can be prosecuted now, if the timeline, if the time limits haven't expired. They could have been prosecuted any, since then to now, at any time upon discovery. And I don't think that there's anything to prevent the commissioners or staff from sending to the Attorney General any complaints they want. In fact, we are here today because of whistleblowers, because they blew the whistle on what was going on there, and they saw it too much. It was actually staff who said, "Hey, we've seen these leases, people, these are relatives of some people in our office," things like that. And so I believe they, those doors are absolutely still open unless time periods have expired.
Senator Tadegui, does that help?
Yes, it, it very much helps, you know, justice needs to prevail. We can't make people think that they can get away with the wrongdoings on this island, illegally giving away land. That seems to be an issue. In fact, it was my mother at Land Management who discovered the ceiling of property, and she received a certificate for that. So I'm, I'm glad too, and I'm glad that the Speaker mentioned about the employee who came up and, and during her testimony said that, "When I first started working there, I remember they gave me rules and regulations and said, 'Here, here are the rules and regulations.'" And then when the process was happening, she was working, she read through them, learned what the rules and regs were, the process. And then when something came in front of her to get approved, she goes, "Well, you know, that's not part of the rules and regs." She was told, "Oh, we've been doing that this way for years." That's what she was told from, as being a new employee, from someone who's been sitting in that position for a while. She testified to that fact. There are rules and regulations. It's just that the employees were not following them. There is a timeline on this bill to process the 2,800 applicants. And if I'm not mistaken, that is to expire, or the, the intent was to finish these applications in, I believe, is it two years? And may I ask the Speaker to verify it?
Madam Speaker, would you like to yield to that question regarding the timeline?
I believe that there are different time limits. So the one where the commission has to review all the leases and, and determine whether they're in compliance or not, all of that, has to be done by December, according to subsection D, page five, December 31, 2027. But the commission has pretty much said they think they can get this done in a year. So we're hoping that that's actually what happens, unless there's some difficult cases. The, the next timeframe is for them to give notice of exactly what needs to be remediated and to review the remediation, whether it's been in compliance, that's 2029. And, and if they're supposed to be issued a new lease, then all of those are supposed to take place 2029. No, in other words, all of this, new leases, old leases, certifying that your old lease is still good, all of it should be all completed, no later than 2029. But again, the Tomorrowland Trust has pretty much assured that they've been working on this already. They're, that's how we know exactly how many there are and what categories they fall into. So they're hoping to get that, the, the review of all the leases done, hopefully in a year.
Senator Tadegui.
Thank you. I mean, that's about four years for them to complete some of these. I'm, I'm looking at the ones who are in question, the ones where those individuals may be kicked out of their land because it was wrongfully given to them or the process was not just. And my concern is, many of them, like it was said earlier, you know, trying to get loans to move on repairs to their homes or to even build the homes. And I'm hoping there's a way to fast-track some of those so that we don't find them out in the street without a place to live. So I'm, I'm hoping that maybe later on, we can look at funding for the Tomorrowland Trust to get this project completed, to get everything in order, because it will need some funding. And I'm hoping that we can address that as quickly as we, we get this bill through. So I appreciate that. And there is an amendment, Madam Chair, that I'd like to proffer on this, on the bill. However, if you could just give me one minute to verify if it's conducive enough. If not, then I, I will yield my time, but if you can just give me one minute.
Moment's recess. Yimina Chantai, Shetina Luslatudengwa, on his back from me, says, "Senator Tadegui, you still have the floor."
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that short recess, just to verify with the author the legislation. I think my concern, as well as another colleague's concern, was the ethical ability, I mean, the ethical issues when, when, when it needs to be addressed. Basically, will this be able to be prosecuted through, through the Ethics Commission or through the Attorney General's office? I mean, you come into situations like that, we have whistleblowers that have been, I mean, that's where we are today, thank goodness, to those who are willing to stand up and be, have the courage enough to, you know, call the, the wrong actors out and for what they're, you know, the wrongful doing, what they're, to the lands that were basically given to people who shouldn't have ever got them. So that being said, I, I'm pretty sure that there is, as they go through this process, the mechanism is through the Ethical Commission, that somebody can file an ethics complaint, number one, or number two, take it straight to the Attorney General's office. So I think that covers it. So other than that, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this legislation and then thank the author for all her years, years of hard work to try and make the Tomorrowland Trust respectable and a place we can all trust that these lands are given fairly to the people in most need. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and of course, ask to be a co-sponsor of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tadegui. Now, Madam Speaker, you may close. Oh, Senator Lawn, I apologize. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in support of this bill as well. And as the author of the bill, Speaker Terla, he had mentioned in the opening statement that he had this bill also was highly recommended by the Attorney General, writing to the governor and, and of course, to the Speaker, asking that a bill with her support will be introduced, and it will help solve the, the problems created years ago at the CLTC, Tomorrowland Trust, due to persons applying for them and not being so pursuant to Guam law. It also says the, the subject was, of course, the CLTC void leases and prioritization of application problems. We heard in the public hearing, Madam Speaker, of course, the situation. One of the employees had, had said that, yeah, there were quite a few instances that she particularly observed were, that was given to, to a family. The Attorney General was there and, and of course, testified in the hearing. And he had recommended that, yeah, in some of these cases, the prosecution may be in, in line. So some of the questions that were posed in regards to whether or not this will help the Tomorrowland Trust, you know, in cleaning up the very messy situation that they have over there, I think it, it will, and likewise, answers the question in regards to, to possible prosecution in, in, in cases where they can prove as such. That being said, unfortunately, some of the problems that Tomorrowland Trust or some of the folks that come to my office regarding problems with Tomorrowland Trust, unfortunately, this bill won't, won't, won't solve it. Because as the author of the bill, Speaker Terla, he had mentioned, there are numerous problems. This one, this particular bill won't solve all the problems that the, the Tomorrowland Trust is, has in, in place at this point. Because there are quite a few people that were given properties as well that were not properties of the Tomorrowland Trust. There's property, people who were given properties, say, were told to be able to build in these properties that were not yet returned to the government of Guam. Now, those need remedies as well. This bill won't do it, but this bill goes a long ways to be able to fix the fixable problems at this, at this point. The others, I, I hope that we'll be able to find a solution. I hope that this will go a long way to be able to, again, clean up some of the mess that, that has occurred over the years. One of the things also that was mentioned, that the reason why these application processes vary slow as well, is that when one application, your number comes up and is being reviewed, and there are problems with the, with, with the application, they cannot set us, they cannot set it aside and move to the next one. They have to finish that particular application. That's got to be done before they move to, to the, to the next one. It's not a jumping over, but it has to be, that application has to be solved before the next one can be, can be even examined. And that could take months if even that application can be, can be remedied. So with that, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of, of the bill that was, of course, introduced by Speaker Terla. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I think I got everybody. If not, Speaker Terla, you may close.
Sidozmasi. I'm cracking up because, first of all, I really liked that groundhog or the whackum example. The visual is exactly how I feel sometimes, and it is, it feels like that, particularly with this bill. Because when we're trying to resolve issues of the past, and a million of them keep coming up, I'm just like, what? When I first became a senator in 2018, that was the year when the AG came out with this big announcement that they had over 100 leases that were void, void, null and void. And that they had a whole other slew of leases that were voidable unless the commission acted on them. And so I thought that was the extent of a huge problem. And at that time, I remember, I was so disgusted, so overwhelmed, so frustrated. Because when you think about what it took to get this act implemented, that's, anyone would not implement it correctly, is, it's really, I could just go off on that topic alone, but I'm not going to. I'm just going to say, it took a lot to get this implemented. It took, it took Paul Berdalio, it took all of his colleagues, despite the objections of governors back then. It took decades later, Angel Santes, the Nation Tomorrow, all of them. They were awesome. They worked together, they educated people in Guam, they educated the senators. They worked together, they educated people in Guam, they educated the senators. They made sure that when the governors weren't listening to them, they camped out at Adalup. They got lawyers. I was one of them who was, had the honor to work together with Attorney Mike Phillips, who really wrote the briefs. Attorney Mike Phillips, Attorney Mike Berdalio. We went to court with Angel Santes while Nation Chamorro was over at Adalup. It took all of the community altogether. Everybody had a part in order to get this act implemented. And that was just for the governor. And that, at that time, the AG was opposed to the act and was challenging it. BJ Cruz was the judge and he ordered it to be implemented. That meant the governor had to appoint a board, and so the governor did. And since then, we've been going forward and we've had commissioners and we've had directors, different ones, as you know. But of course, so when this comes to us, our attention that, you know, we were told at the time in 2018, I remember, one of the solutions given to us, I was not the land chair then, but the solution proposed was just ratify all the leases. But at that time, it had come on the heels of like an investigation or media and whistleblowers and many people coming out and talking about the inequity in leases that were given, particularly in Baragota Heights. That was really the impetus. And, you know, back then, to just ratify all the leases, everybody was very torn. It would have just really said, we are all for corruption, just move forward. But I really believe time has passed, some of these players have passed away. We have so many innocent parties, so many people, and this is really, one of my colleagues asked a really good question. What is right? What is the right thing to do when so many wrongs were committed? And I think we can focus on that. What is right is to remember that the leases that were issued wrongly, they were not taken by these applicants, they were not stolen and they tried to benefit themselves. They were issued by directors, they were issued by commissioners, they were issued by the government. And these applicants, for the most part, they acted in good faith with whatever those directors told them to do, whatever those commissioners told them to do. That's how it was implemented back then. So I think it's, it is right as well to honor their reliance, despite the government error, their reliance on the government, that the government knew what they were doing and that they relied on it. And they put their sweat, they put their money, they brought their families, they suffered, a lot of them, without utilities, they did all of that because of their reliance on government action. And I think it's right that we continue to pursue residential and agricultural leases with an aggressiveness that's never been seen before. We need to move forward on these because this is the mission of the land trust and the mission of the land trust is so relevant today, just as it was back then in the 12th Guam Legislature. It's still relevant today because these people were still left landless, number one. Number two, we are suffering a housing shortage never seen before. So this bill, without this bill, the CLTC has no choice. If they follow the AG's opinion and they render all those leases void, they have to evict all of them, kick them out. With this bill, even, they would have to kick out even those who did everything right. But with this bill, despite some of the cases that might have been intentional, we can move forward with this bill and we can allow those, the bulk of these, who have moved forward in good faith, we can allow them, as my colleague said, to get loans, to actually build a residence. We can actually allow them to get the infrastructure and the utilities. And we can not evict them from their farms. Farming is really, I feel, you know, it's one of those things that we've got to support. And so if they are following the rules with their farming, I want to honor that as much as we can. And I feel like that is also the right thing to do. So I do not want to harm the innocent we have, who have already been through this process, 2,800 of them. I do not want to harm anymore the 8,000 who are waiting to still be processed. I do not want them to be stuck waiting to remedy all these things in the past. I want everything clear, past, future, we're clear, we're moving and move. There's a finite, contrary to what's been said, there is only a finite number of acres on Guam. So to me, every acre is precious and every applicant expecting a part of an acre, they should be prioritized. They should be prioritized over everything else that we want to do with this land, commercial, racetracks, solar farms, all of it. These residential and agricultural leases are the primary mission of the Chamor Land Trust. They should be the priority. And so hopefully, with this bill, that's clear and we move, despite what other flukes might come their way. And I want to thank the whistleblowers, the media, who really brought attention to a lot of the problems. And I think they've made it them with the Chamor Land Trust kind of new ways that they operate, the improvements that they have made, they have made it very difficult to get away with abuse going forward. So I think that will be very unheard of in the future. And so, but I, like my colleagues, if there's something to be prosecuted, I say you go for it. That should be prosecuted. And before I close, I'm almost out of time. And I just want to thank all of those who testified, all of my colleagues. I love the debate today. I feel like, of course, I'm under the gun answering all the questions, but I don't mind because it's worth it. It's worth it if we can all get on the same page and understand this as much as we need to in order to vote. I'd like to move to add some sponsors. I'd like to add Senator Perez, who was at the hearing, Senator Barnett, who was at the hearing, Senator Brown, and who was at the hearing as well, and Senator Luhon, who was at the hearing. I'd also like to add those who spoke up today, including you, Vice Speaker, Senator Canata, Senators San Augustine and Senators Titegui and Shelton and Senator Luhon, Senator Duñez. Everybody, toro. Okay, and I think we're covered.
On that motion, are there any objections? Motion carries. Speaker, on the motion, please.
Yes, can I just say thank you? Because I, this is really stressful. I was telling my colleague, I'm ready to break out in stand-up humor because of all the stress. And just, oh man, it's been really hard work, a lot of hard work going back and forth with the agency, who knows this better than anyone, and with the attorney, who's now engaged finally and thankfully for the Chamor Land Trust and for the commissioners who are on it. So I want to thank all of them. And with that, I'd like to move that the bill, 334, as amended or substituted on the floor and further amended on the floor, be moved to the third reading.
On that motion, are there any objections, seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Colleagues, it's 10 till 5:00. We're going to go ahead in recess to Monday at 9:00, per the Speaker. We are in recess.